Thank you, sir. Good evening. This meeting of the East Ridge Planning Commission will now come to order for July the 10th, 2023. Ms. Mahoney, roll call, please.
Chairperson Tuggle.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Howe.
Here.
Commission Member Cornelius.
Here.
Commission Member Williams.
Here.
Commission Member Witt.
Thank you. And I trust everyone's had a moment to review the minutes from the June 5th, 2023 meeting, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commission Member Witt and a second from Vice Chairperson Howe. Ms. Mahoney, roll call, please.
Vice Chairperson Howe.
Yes.
Commission Member Cornelius.
I was absent from the meeting.
Commission Member Williams.
Yes.
Commission Member Witt.
Yes.
Chairperson Tuggle.
Yes. Okay, there is an item for communication and comments by the public. We will have any members of the public who want to speak on these topics. If you want to approach the light turn, make sure you adjust the microphone as we record these, and if you can give your name and your address, please. If you can keep your comments to two minutes, you have everybody a chance to get heard. We can begin that process if you'd like. Okay. All right, nobody's in a rush. We'll give you a moment to, once we go through each item, if you want to do that then. There is no old business, so we'll continue to new business. The first item is the request of Stone Creek Consulting LLC, Alan Jones, to have the properties located at 636 and 650 Layfield Road, tax map ID 170JB004.04, and tax map ID number 170JB004.05, rezone from R1 Residential District to R3 Residential Apartment District. Mr. Howe.
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, so this rezone would be from R1 Residential to R3 Apartment District, would be to utilize the parcel in accordance with the Tennessee Condominium Act, building five townhomes detached single-family units on the parcel. The proposed residential density for this development is 9.343 dwelling units per acre for the townhomes. The adjacent density consists of 2.55 dwelling units for the adjacent single-family dwellings, and 14.2 dwelling units per acre for the adjacent multifamily use. The proposed five units would have parking at the rear of the property. No individual driveways will be on Layfield, would consist of one drive entrance for all five units. RPA had no concerns with adjacent land uses, development form, or location, lighting, or height for the proposed R3 rezone. This rezone is identical, if you remember, to the 2023 rezone of the adjacent parcels, 664, 678, and 692 Layfield. That was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council with conditions to allow residential condos or townhomes to be constructed on the R3 parcel, if approved.
And that being a restriction to prevent apartments, but just allow condos?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And I see the RPA, does city staff have any recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Does the city staff have any recommendation?
It fits what the district requires for that R3, so it does meet all the requirements of it, so it would be, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and if anyone from the applicant would like to come up and speak concerning the request? Yes, thank you. If you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Matt Marsh with EPG Homes. So I'm filling in for Alan Jones today, he's out of town. But this project is sandwiched between two multifamily properties, so the east and west. The site is also surrounded by an underdeveloped piece of property that is also owned by the developer. Since there are single-family homes in the north, we think it is important to limit the housing type to single-family detached homes or townhomes. The site plan is illustrating single-family detached homes in the event it is developed as a standalone project. Trash service will be provided along the entry drive, and fire service can access the homes from Layfield Road, or from the rear if necessary. We are providing one garage space and one surface parking space for each unit, so that we meet the two-car garage-per-unit requirement. We are suggesting two conditions to go along with this rezone request, which will help this site as a transition between the surrounding multifamily with the single-family to the north. Those conditions are only, single-family detached or townhomes shall be allowed. And the other condition is no individual driveways allowed on Layfield.
Got it. So you're amenable to a restriction that would allow just townhomes or condos on that property?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Great, thank you very much. We may call you back in a moment.
Yep.
And if there's anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the request, feel free to approach. Without saying anyone, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commission Member Cornelius and a second from Commission Member Williams. Ms. Mahoney, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Chairperson Howe.
I'm sorry, you want to discuss first?
Yes, please.
Please.
Sorry about that.
My mistake, I got a little too quick on the draw. Commission Member Williams would like to discuss.
What size homes are you looking at on this?
If you don't mind returning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to walk back up.
It's on a recording, so if you don't mind coming back.
What size are these, single-family townhomes?
It's a three-bedroom, around 1,200 to 1,300 square feet.
Okay, great.
Saying that we're doing it Black Hawk Commons.
And they're two-story or three?
Two.
Two-story?
Yes.
Got it.
Garbage, is that, do you want to have a container, or is it going to be, you're going to be using city services? The container, or are you going to have actually a dumpster for the?
I think we're doing a turnaround, Aces is working on that right now for a turnaround so we can have city services.
I hate to make you do this, but since it's recorded, can you come up here and say that again, please, for the microphone? And if you don't mind giving your name and address, too.
My name's Evan Green, my address is 1906 Rossville Avenue, Chattanooga.
Thank you.
At Black Hawk Commons, we signed an agreement with the city, even though it'll be a private drive to, for them to access trash service there, so we're planning to do the same thing at this property.
So are they actually pulling in and having to back out?
There's a T.
There's a T, so they're going to be doing the same, you said, with Asa?
Yes, sir, yeah. Yeah, Asa's working on, I think there'll be a T, maybe even two different Ts in this specific location. There's, previous owners of the property had tried to, which they couldn't do, abandoned the easement that was there, that leads to some property at the back for Mr. Williams. And we talked to him, and we're going to put our private drive on that easement that we have, and that he also is entitled to, and it'll help him be able to connect it without paving as much.
Okay, awesome. That's all I had.
I have a problem with the density, with how small the lots are and how much we're putting on there. Is that's not an issue with the city?
Well, this lot in itself, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, gets over an acre or two, right?
Yeah, I think it's like one point. This one specifically was over an acre, I believe.
Yeah, I think the density was right between...
Four townhouses?
I think this one has five townhouses, so.
Right.
It actually has, the density's very comparable to the townhouse across the street and the townhouses, the single-family detached houses that we're building at Hummingbird Village on Frawley. So it's just a different layout, so.
That's the biggest concern I have, is that we're just putting so many houses or townhomes and everything in a small lot. And Layfield is not a big road, so, and then we're putting more on Frawley Road.
I totally understand that, per our city ordinances on the RT1, those lots, I mean, your minimum size lot for an RT1 is 18 feet. Minimum build site's only 1,350 square feet. City ordinance, basically what that says is these fit, fit that density, that's that property, so without changing our requirements for the zoning regulations, these work.
Yeah, and I believe you said the density was about nine, and it was, and it's 14 for the R3 that's adjoining, so it's halfway in between the R1 and the R3.
And these will be for sale units, and we're trying to hit a certain price point here, which is kind of why the density comes in. We're hoping to be under, the starting out and the whole development be at 250, 260, and also, I think that we might max out on these with the basement at 320, as affordable as we can. I bought my first house here in East Ridge in 2009, and I was able to buy it at the time for, I think it was $80,000, you know, and now there's just nothing available for people that are just starting out. Unfortunately, with the lot prices we're having to pay down the road, which are now $68,000 for the single-family houses, impossible to build an affordable product there, so we're really kind of doing this to try to get more people at my age and younger to be able to get, there won't be rentals, there're not going to be.
For sale, and there's five of them on that one, a little over an acre?
Yeah.
Well, it's one parcel, I think there's two.
There's two, it was two lots initially.
Two lots.
And we're going to abandon the one lot, so. Asa is working on the exact layout, so this shows if it's going to be a standalone project, then I'm being five detached units. We've talked about potentially making townhouses that, like the ones across the street that are attached, but, yeah. We've also met with the neighbors at a community meeting. Listened to all their concerns about the one drive, they really didn't want a lot of driveways on Layfield. Talked to them, and I think everybody's in agreement that what we're doing will be better than what's there now, which is a mosquito pit.
I appreciate you doing a community meeting, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Makes it a little easier for us. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. We get a roll call, please.
Vice Chairperson Howe.
Yes.
Commission Member Cornelius.
Yes.
Commission Member Williams.
Yes.
Commission Member Witt.
No.
Chairperson Tuggle.
Yes. Okay, that motion we're carrying, and the second item is the request of Michael Myers to have the properties located at parts of 861 Donaldson Road and all of 865 Donaldson Road, parts of tax map ID number 156LC012.01, and all of tax map ID 156LC013, rezone from R1 Residential District to RT1 Residential Townhouse District. Mr. Howe.
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, as you stated, this rezone is from R1 Single Family to RT1 Townhome District, to construct four attached townhomes on 0.36 acres, with a proposed density of 11.11 dwelling units per acre. Adjacent density is currently 8.33 dwelling units per acre. The site is surrounded by single-family residential, multifamily residential, and two-family dwelling, residential units. Current development form includes small suburban lots and larger lots with multifamily. RPA had no concerns with location, lighting, or height. The site plan shows two entrances to access the townhomes with a private drive running parallel to the townhomes to access two lots to the west of the property where two single-family dwellings will be constructed. Going from an R1 to an RT1, this would be considered a down zone due to the amount of uses that are allowed in the RT1. Allows currently, currently, R1 District allows for 16 uses, both permitted and uses on review, while the RT1 District allows for nine permitted uses and uses on review.
Thank you. And does the staff have a recommendation?
Once again, this, I know Ms. Witt doesn't like the density. As, you know, as we all know, East Ridge is the most densely populated city in the entire state of Tennessee.
I know bringing in a lot of this stuff, a lot of people frowned upon, this does meet
the requirements of the RT1. I, you know, at that point, I have no other thing than to say approval of it.
And I believe that was the intention of RT1, I remember when we created that, it was to increase density. And a representative from the applicant, name and address, please.
Yes, sir, Mike Price, MAP Engineers, 7380 Applegate Lane, Chattanooga. Do members of the commission have this drawing?
Let's check.
Yes, smaller version.
Yes, we do, we have the small version.
Okay, all right, great. So Mr. Myers is requesting the ability to construct these four townhomes that you see here. We've also looked at it in terms of providing landscaping, which, adjoining our neighbors, we think is appropriate and commensurate with reducing the impacts with our development. We've also looked at stormwater and looked at putting a detention facility behind here, there's sort of a draw that comes through here, so that we can ameliorate the runoff, so that we don't have any increases as it relates to what occurs downstream. Each of these townhomes will have a single-car garage, with also parking on one side or off to the side, so, and you could park in front of the garage, so technically, there's three parking spaces in front of each townhome, if you will. So there, in listening to the discussion with the last case, no density was one of the concerns that was discussed, I would point out that we could have rezoned the entire property, which would have reduced the overall zoning number with what we're asking in the RT1, but we didn't feel that that was appropriate, because that wasn't our intent. Our intent was to do the two single-family homes there in the back and put the townhomes in the front. So when you look at the numbers, yes, we are at 11.1 units per acre for the RT1, but we're also at units, you know, we're at two units per acre or thereabouts, a little less as it relates to the single-family. So if you really sort of combine the two, you can see we didn't try to max out in through here, we simply tried to fit in what we thought was appropriate in the neighborhood. We do see that in terms of garbage service, that we would put a community little area where people can keep their cans in, drop their trash in, pull it out on trash day, then drop it back in. I didn't show it on the plan, but that was basically our intent, is to use city services for that, but to keep the garbage cans where you don't have to keep them in the garage, but you actually would place them in a community area that would be blocked in and screened off, so that it's not an eyesore, not sort of just stuck out on a pad, if you will, but would be blocked in with like a four-foot-high block wall type of a situation there to screen those off. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer, that's basically the nutshell, I think. These are for sale, by the way, not for rent.
And about how much in square footage?
So each of these is roughly about 800 square feet's the floor plate, and we're looking at two stories, so I think you're going to be somewhere in that 1,300, 1,400 square footage, once you take out the garage, so somewhere about in that realm.
Thank you. And Mr. Howe, the way that the request is written, would it include the landscape buffer automatically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Okay, any further discussion from the Planning Commission?
I still have a problem with the density and the road that it's on. Donaldson is not a road that can carry a lot of traffic and stuff, so the more density we put on that road, that's smaller than on the front.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. And if there's anybody from the audience who would like to speak either in favor or opposition, feel free. Mr. Howe, would you mind helping him with the microphone, please? If you can provide your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Pyle. I'm an attorney, a retired attorney. I live about a block away, 3524 Pinellas Lane.
Okay.
The thing, we have tried to get a copy of the information that the application and, or have been frustrated about that. I did put in a written application for that today, and I've been told it will be a week before I will be allowed to see the information on there. It was my impression that this is a matter of public record, and I should be allowed to see it, but I've been told, no, there's some private information in there, they're going to have to...
Redact, right.
Redact some things, and so it will be at least a week before I get to see the information to determine whether or not I have objections to this. The things that concern me immediately, just from the presentation here, the place where the, this proposed project is, first of all, if you stand on the proposed project where they're going to be putting four townhouses in, absolutely everything that you view to the east of that is single-family dwellings. Single houses on a lot. Everything between there and Germantown, single-family. There's no, I don't think there's even a duplex in that area, and I don't think that this is an improvement to the neighborhood at all.
Sure.
And I'd be very concerned about the downward movement of the neighborhood in doing that.
I understand, thank you.
And I'm concerned, I don't think they're going to handle the runoff situation. I'm concerned about what they're doing to the density, the change in density to that neighborhood, which is a pleasant, single-family neighborhood, basically. Now, going up the hill, there are apartments. Up the hill, there are, there is a greater density, but if you go down the hill to the east, it's all single-family. Everything you can see from that property is single-family.
Sure.
And so, at this moment, from what I can see, I'm opposed to it, and I'd like to make sure I see all the documents before I change that decision.
Sure, so just to allay your concerns a little bit, we, if we approve this in the Planning Commission, it moves on to two readings at the City Council, so it will be about at least a month before anything is decided finally on this property. The Planning Commission certainly does make an, whether, we approve whether or not it moves to the planning, I mean, I'm sorry, to the City Council for their approval, but ultimately, the final decisions are made by the City Council, so you'll have ample time before that for feedback at the council meetings. And I know there are at least three council members in this room, because I can see them, so I'm sure they've heard your concerns as well, so, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Kelly, and I live on Pinellas Road, 3524 Pinellas Road, which is down the street from this. I travel up and down, Pinellas Lane is a little L-shaped street that on one end is Cathy Lane, and the other side, on the other side is Donaldson. So I'm up and down, often on Donaldson, and that is a narrow road. You are dealing with hills in there and the narrowness, and this is, this is not in a good location where this proposed development is, with Gleason and Cathy coming right up there with Pinellas, and it's going to be right in the middle there, and you're adding the potential, I heard him say, you could have three parking spaces for each of these homes. I can't imagine 12 more cars in there, and adding the in and out and in and out, so, plus, you talked about the drainage. Behind Donaldson, up the hill, if you go around on Gleason, you'll come to a big apartment complex way up on top of that hill that is being remodeled and redone, but this property on Donaldson, the big apartment complex is up there, there's tremendous water that comes down from there, and he's talking about the drainage, well, it's going to be whooshing down, and I've got real concerns about that, plus the crowding that's already, there's too much. Anyway, those are my concerns, and I will, it's too much traffic, adding way too much traffic on Donaldson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, and if somebody from the applicant would like to address some of those concerns, specifically around water abatement would probably be the most helpful.
Let me do this first, if I might.
Might help speed up the process a little bit, thank you.
Well, yeah, and again, we certainly want to, I wasn't aware of any requests, but certainly, any information that after this meeting, or if he wants to contact my office, he's more than welcome, we'll give him whatever information that he may, Mr. Pyle may want. So we have looked at storm drainage and contours, that's the reason we showed the pond where we do in here, because we knew there is a draw, we do recognize the fact that we do have apartments behind us, and so that's why we're trying to take that into account to deal with the runoff, so that we did not end up with an increase leaving our site as a result of what we're looking at developing. What I typically find a lot of times with smaller type developments like this is, you don't have enough parking, and if I don't have enough parking on the site, where are people going to park? They're going to park out on the streets, it's just the reality. So we tried to intentionally look at parking in a manner to be responsible to provide enough spaces, not just two as a minimum, but reality-wise, you could do three in the event that you've got guests, or if some of your neighbors have a guest. So that's, that's part of the reason that we did what we did as it relates to the parking in through here. And then I believe Mr. Myers has some, I think, some comments that he'd like to make to the commission, if that's all right.
Sure, if you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Yes, my first name is Robie, last name Myers, I call my Mike. I live on Signal Mountain 201 Clegg Street. Just wanted to mention, you know, I've invested in East Ridge since the mid-'70s. I owned and built duplexes on McBrien Road, and then the duplexes that are adjacent to this property, I built in 1986, and I lived on Donaldson Road for eight years. It's a wonderful neighborhood. The apartment complex that has been mentioned at the top of my property has been there over 50 years, and, you know, we're not creating any new water, the water has been there, it's been taken care of for years and years, there's not been a problem with runoff, and I'm sure you're aware that the apartments are currently under reconstruction. I don't know who's doing that, and I don't know the project itself, but we did drive through there a few, you know, a couple hours ago, and it's going to be a higher-end project than has been there before. So the whole neighborhood is dramatically changing, the apartment, the duplexes that I built and lived in have been completely renovated by the owner, has done a wonderful job. So what we're seeing is an upper-scale movement in that neighborhood, because of the fact that the people are taking pride in the houses and the duplexes that are being owned, and we're going to continue that and make sure this project is going to be on the upper scale. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, or Mike would be glad to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay. I will entertain a motion. To approve, amend, or deny?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commission Member Howe and a second from Commission Member Cornelius. Any further discussion? Commission Member Williams? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chairperson Howe.
Yes.
Commission Member Cornelius.
Yes.
Commission Member Williams.
No.
Commission Member Witt.
No.
Chairperson Tuggle.
Yes. Okay, so this will move to the City Council for two readings, and as I said, there will be ample opportunity to discuss that prior. The main job of the Planning Commission is to determine whether or not the land use fits the surrounding uses and whether it's permissible, not necessarily the content of what goes on it. We ask mostly content for the benefit of the audience and neighbors to understand what's happening, so feel free to share your feedback at the City Council meetings, and that'll be on the agenda. Okay? The third item this evening is the request of NNR Properties to have the property located at 1438 North Smith Street, tax map ID 169LK001.01, rezone from C1 Tourism Commercial District and R1 Residential District to RT1 Residential Townhouse District. Mr. Howe.
Yes, member of this Planning Commission, so this rezone is from, basically is a split zone at C1 and R1 at this moment, wishing to go to an RT1 to be, to construct four attached townhome units on approximately 0.2 acres, which is roughly around 12,000 square feet, with a proposed density of 14.28 dwelling units per acre, with the adjacent residential density is currently at 4.25, 4.5 dwelling units per acre. The site is surrounded by single-unit residential dwellings and commercial use, surrounding development includes small... Surrounding development includes small suburban lots, one or two-story dwellings with no, with onsite parking with moderate intensity commercial uses. RPA had no concerns with location, height, nor lighting. Proposed site plans show four parking spaces off North Smith Street, two, two spaces adjacent to Unit Four, with four additional garage parking for a total of ten spaces on the lot. Trash receptacles will be placed on North Smith Street for easy pickup. Fire apparatus turnaround are not required due to reduction of, of lot length from landscape requirements. Normally, when you have a hundred and fifty feet or more, uh, of length, you have to have a turnaround for fire apparatus access. These being four, uh, units themselves will require NFPA sprinkler system, so that, that has reduced the concerns of the fire department as well. This would be considered a down zone as well from the amount of uses that R-T-one allows, with only nine permitted uses allowed in this, within this zone. It does fit the requirements, and I know this is a very small lot, once again, Ms. Ondy. It does meet our zoning requirements, though.
Thank you, and what is the proposed density?
I believe it's fourteen point two eight.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. If there's anyone from the applicant who would like to speak on behalf?
Uh, thank you, Mike Price, M A P Engineers, uh, same address as before. Uh, if it's all right, I'd like to pass these out to give you an idea of exactly what's being proposed to be constructed.
Sure.
So as you can see, this is a, um, a very nice townhouse proposal, I think, in terms of it being an asset to the community. It's sort of in a, a little bit of a different situation than our previous case that we just discussed. So, we're directly behind McDonald's in the drive-thru. Directly across the street, we've got the hotel. And then we've got residential then, as you go further down North Smith Street. So, given that, uh, and this property in through here is part of the other property where the Provenos Restaurant used to be located. And so, has, that development continues, a redevelopment, once we get underway on that. This property is also one that he wanted to look at putting in a residential use for. Uh, so, these units would be approximate in value of around three hundred thousand, uh, each, is what, uh, what we anticipate. Uh, we did meet with staff, and, uh, out of that, we changed our design to what you see here to reflect some of the comments that we got from staff. And we think it was an improvement as it relates to how we were able to, uh, fit the, the, the buildings in through here, create the parking, and, uh, provide what we think would be an asset to the community. We did surround the entire property with, with landscaping that you see, uh, with the single drive. And, uh, again, I think this is, like, it's, it's, it's a down zone, because we are commercial as well as residential, uh, what we've got out through here. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Great, thank you, and what was the approximate square footage of the new?
So, the, the square footage each of these buildings is twenty-three feet wide, and I think we're around thirty feet deep. So, you're looking at around eleven hundred, I think, square footage?
About fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, about is where we would end up being on these.
Thank you. Mr. Howell, this is C-one, are you aware if it was in the border region prior?
That's something I didn't check on, because it has the split zone on it. It's currently has that R-one, I think it is, and C-one.
What property, what's the business that's on it currently?
It's, it's vacant.
It's vacant now. It, it, there's a little drainage swell that runs just beside the McDonald's and behind the former Provenos. And so, it's all connected as, as it relates to this property. So this is a portion that we're separating out from the commercial development that will be taking place on the Proveno, oh, Proveno side.
I see. Uh, I see the trees now on the satellite map, am I mistaken?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
I do. So, uh, I'm just gonna be, that density is even higher than the last one that you brought forward that I didn't, um, I didn't vote in favor of. So this is even a higher density, and I also have concern with those four parking spots that you will back out of or back into off of North Smith. And I didn't know if you wanted to ask the audience first, if there's anybody that wanted to come up, but those are my two concerns.
Sure.
Now, that picture I like, I also like the size. You only have three units. Would you consider dropping one and do three units so you can adjust the parking off of North Smith? Those are my comments and questions. You don't have to answer now, but...
Those are the comments, got it, thank you. All right, if there's anybody from the audience who would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the, uh, development, feel free to approach. If you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Uh, Jerry Grant, uh, forty-two thirty-six Beaver Hill Road in Pikeville, Tennessee. I'm here on behalf of my mom. She owns that property right next to
Okay.
the, uh, I guess, the lot we're talking about.
Welcome to East Ridge.
Uh, yeah, I was raised here. But, uh, we, we were ju- we just didn't know what was, this is what they're
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, this is the, this rendering shows three, I believe the proposal said four, so that's one moment, one thing we would like to clarify, but yes, that's what we were handed.
Okay, and I guess what we was concerned about was the drainage and, you know, the, in and outs of it all.
Sure. Actually, Mr. Howell, if you don't mind addressing that, and there have been a couple of questions about drainage. Are they required to make sure there's no additional water, um, with residential? Is there a permeability question? How is runoff handled from the city's standpoint?
From the city's standpoint, it's less than an acre, so land disturbance permits aren't required for that si- uh, that size of a site. Of course, you know, uh, best management practices would state, you know, a, any property on your, any water on your property, you know, keep it there. Don't have it, you know, encroach on anybody else's. So, I think that's something that would be addressed as, you know, if, if this was approved through this board and this body and, uh, City Council that we had addressed at that time.
Sure, thank you, I'm sorry, can, continue, just wanna make sure we got that.
Oh, no, that, that's fine, I just, we just wanted to know what, we saw that little sign in there, and there's concern. They said had to come to the commission meeting, so...
Sure, the, um, if it helps you, I know it's tiny, but it shows four units that look really similar. And, uh, you are you're welcome to this one. That'll get speed up the request process a little bit. All right, is anybody else who'd like to speak in favor or opposition? Yep, Mr. Price, you wanted to respond?
So, a couple things. So, a lot of times when calculating density for developments, we have properties where the density is reduced because of the fact that there's land that we can't utilize. This is sort of the perfect footprint, so you sort of get penalized from a density standpoint because you, you're able to fit everything in that you're, you're trying to do, and there's no excess land that is either not utilized or can't be, uh, can't be developed. Uh, but, to the question that was put before me, uh, going to three, we could, we could take down to three and then take Unit Four and put four parking spaces down there. Then you don't have to have the four then on, uh, North Smith Street. And then, I think, that would address that particular concern. And then we would not be putting any stormwater runoff on, um, your mother's property on, on that. So, there is a drainage ditch, actually, again, that runs between, uh, the McDonald's, the Provenos in the back of this site, and that's where the runoff would be directed to. So it would not be directed on anyone else's property. So, if, uh, if this body feels that going to three and taking the parking off of North Smith Street is the right thing to do, then we're certainly amenable to that.
Yeah? Mr. Howell, if there, I'm sorry.
How does that change the density?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I think three of us are gonna ask the same question.
It's around ten.
Around ten, okay.
Around ten.
And if they make an amendment, um, in, in the proposed vote, the amendment could restrict the number of units being built on the property, right? As part of the rezoning application? Okay, thank you.
Right.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, any further questions from the commission? No? All right, roll call, please. I'm sorry, no, we have to have a, we have something to vote on, don't we? I will entertain a motion, and then we'll have a roll call.
I make the motion to approve with condition of it only being three units. And the, the no parking on, um, North, North Smith Street.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commission Member Williams, and a second by Commission Member Witt to approve with a restriction that there be three units permitted on the development and no parking with direct access to North Smith Street. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Chairperson Howell?
Yes.
Commission Member Cornelius?
Yes.
Commission Member Williams?
Yes.
Commission Member Witt?
Yes.
Chairperson Tuggle?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and the final request on a new business is the request of Verna Knight to have the property located at two oh five Eads Street, tax map ID number one five eight O A zero two two dot zero three, rezoned from R-one Residential District to R-two Residential Duplex District. Mr. Howell?
Yes, Members of Planning Commission, this would rezone from R-one to R-two, uh, to use the existing single-family dwelling as a duplex. Proposed resi- residential density would be eight point six DUs per acre, with adjacent residential, residential density at four point one six dwelling units per acre. Uh, the site is surrounded by single-unit residential uses multifamily. Uh, the surrounding development consists of one acre, I'm s- I'm sorry, consists of one and two-story single-family residential with onsite parking and apartments. There are no concern with location, lighting, or height. There are some legal non-conforming duplexes in the area that are currently zoned R-one. Rezone to, uh, R-two would allow, also allow the use of a short-term vacation rental within the structure. Uh, would assault, would also require the two units to be separated by one-hour floor-ceiling, uh, assembly, uh, with separate service panels and meter base, uh, with means of egress and egress requirements out of it. And I don't, I'm not sure if the applicant realizes that or not, but, uh, I wanted to bring that up.
Sure, and it's immediate condition, it cannot be used for short stay.
Not as in short stay, it's, it's currently on R-one, yes.
Sure. All right, great, and are you speaking on behalf of the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Okay, great, thank you, if you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Can I give you?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, yeah. If you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Verna Knight, two oh five Eads Street. And currently, uh, property is zoned as a R-one, wanting it to be changed to an R-two to allow short-term and, um, long-term can be done currently, but short-term rental.
Okay.
So the property boundaries, uh, there are currently R-twos in the area, as well as an R-three that is two, two hundred feet from where I currently live. And, um, the property is about four hundred square feet, the basement, and it has, uh, parking for four parking spaces, including one that's, um, up top that allows for parking. There are several R-twos in the area and a large R-three that's two hundred feet away. Across the street from me is a potential new development across the street that's currently on sale for over two million dollars that is proposed to be, um, condos or townhomes, which will be directly across the street from me. Um, the target audience for what we're, uh, it's owner-occupied space. So, we're looking at traveling nurses, workers, or that are contract workers for companies. And then, of course, with Camp Jordan being right down the road, like a hundred feet, uh, families that are visiting for sporting events, conferences, festivals, that type of thing. Um, also in the package, you will see the, um, short-term rentals in East Ridge currently, and some of the stats on what's allowed in East Ridge. I, um, also see you'll have t- my neighbors on my right and my left have already gave me letters of approval, their approval for me to allow this to be a R, uh, rezoned to an R-two. Um, my property is gonna be managed by I Trip Chattanooga, which is a management company, and they have, um, things in place that make it very amenable to having it as a short-term rental, such as monitoring, uh, for noise, occupancy monitoring. And they manage like thirty properties in the area, and Donna Morgan is here to talk more about that, what they do is I Trip Chattanooga.
Sure, thank you. And just as a point of clarity, um, the Planning Commission provides an opinion on the suitability of the land for that use. Um, obviously, the, the adjustments that would need to be made to support short-stay, if that was one of the intended uses, is something you wouldn't discuss with the staff, because there are separate restrictions on that use apart from the zoning, as he was saying, with a fire barrier and utilities, et cetera. So just keep that in mind, uh, if there is a, a vote to send this through, that doesn't necessarily mean the property can automatically be used for that, the city has other restrictions as well.
If, if you don't mind, if I could just step in real quick. So this is a single-family dwelling, is a, is zoned R-one. I, I gotta stand back as a building inspector now and, and preach this.
He's also a building inspector, so he will, yes.
When you design a single-family dwelling versus what a duplex should be designed at, it's totally different. When I'm talking about unit separation, this means a one-hour rated firewall between these horizontal units now. Normally, in a regular, uh, duplex, a vertical one, you'd have a one-hour rated firewall. So with this, if, if this body elects to rezone this to R-two, that will have to be turned into a duplex, not a single-family dwelling. Separate service meters, firewall, horizontal penetration for your, I'm sorry, your horizontal member there. You know, uh, your means of egress, uh, your emergency means of egress, your smoke detectors in it. I mean, that's, it's, it's, it's quite a bit. It's very hard to take a single-family dwelling and convert that into an R-two, a duplex.
Sure.
But that's, that's just me standing back and saying that. Now, you can have all the money in the world and do what you want with your house, and you can eventually do it, it's just gonna be pricey.
Right. So if the Planning Commission makes a decision on the zoning, uh, there's a gentleman named Michael Howell, who's a building inspector, who'd be happy to discuss those requirements with you, and, uh, he can give you some further information, so...
There is, I currently put it in a, um, a door, a separate door, and there are emergency, and my, my basement does already have a fire alarm.
Great.
Then it's the basement spaces. And, as I understand it, to be, to be able to do short-term rental, it has to be zoned as an R-two.
Yes.
So there's a, there's a melding of the lines between R-two duplex and a short-term rental.
Right. Yes, and that is a zoning request, and that's certainly what we're here to address. And I didn't want to get this commission bogged down in, in the, the details of fire separation, but I wanted to explain to you that if the commission votes yes, that doesn't mean it's now a short-stay. That just means that it's a conforming use that would allow a short-stay, so... All right, is there any discussion from the commission before we speak to the audience? Sure, feel free. If you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
Sure, Donna Morgan, uh, five five eight Austin Drive, Chattanooga, Tennessee, three seven four one nine. Uh, a couple of things I would just ask to Verna, uh, she's already talked about the R-twos and R-threes that are in the neighborhood. There's an R-three like two hundred feet away with a hundred and four, a hundred and four units there. I actually think it's a Section Eight, uh, complex there. There's several other R-twos in the vicinity as well. Uh, no additional traffic would be expected on this, um, because Verna lives by herself, so she had other residents living with her, there'd be just as many cars coming in and out there. Um, she has installed the wall completely there. There are egress standards from, there's the door coming in separate from the outside, a window, and then also access to outside the garage, completely agree, there's more things on the thing. Good thing it's brand-new construction, she's been there maybe sixty days or something, so it definitely is up to code from a brand-new construction, but understand, would have to go through that. Um, as she said, professional manager by I Trip Chattanooga. Uh, started the company, uh, June of last year, uh, and had the Chattanooga market. Now I have the North Georgia market, I manage thirty. Uh, we have ten team members, we're all local. We can be in any of our places within thirty minutes there. I share my information with all the neighbors, so people can get in contact with me. Already have one complex in, uh, East Ridge, up on Atomic Ridge, that I'm managing, and working on another one there. As she said, the biggest thing that we bring is I Trip as a professional property management, is that noise occupancy, um, uh, the noise and the, um, the noise and the, uh, smoke, um, so that we can make sure there's no parties going on, and that no one, uh, is exceeding the limits of the individuals that are there. Obviously, I have full liability, and once again, I can be to the property in thirty minutes there.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Great, thank you very much. All right, any questions from the members of the Planning Commission?
I appreciate the neighbors that have given you permission to do this, but I also received calls from people in the area that were not for this, so just wanted you to be aware that everybody up there is.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone? A member of the public would like to speak, if you don't mind? If you can give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Heather Duesbury, and I am at 207 Eads Street, right next to Verna. We fully give support. We've been there about the same time as Verna has and have no, I don't think it would negatively impact our home life at all. We live in our home. Verna keeps up her home very well, parks in the garage. An extra car or two wouldn't, wouldn't affect it at all. Totally trust her judgment on who she would allow into her home since she does live there also. It wouldn't be like a typical thing. I mean, it would be just somebody a little more stable or, you know, short-term or whatever it is, but I just wanted to give my full support for her in that area. We do have the apartment building up there. This is a lot at less impact than what the apartments do or what another large development would do, so I fully support it.
Great, thank you. We rarely get neighbors in support, so thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in support or opposition?
Opposition.
Okay, feel free. And if you don't mind, once you get the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Plan, Commission members, thank you. Michael Howell, good to see you again, buddy. I own the property, I'm Edward Wood, and I live at 100 Fawn Drive. Also own the property at 101 Fawn, the property acreage at, at the end of Douglas, and the big Roman brick right behind yours on Noah Reed. So I just found out about this this afternoon, that's the reason I came. As soon as I seen that duplex, I took one look at that house and said, "How are you gonna put a duplex here?" But I'm now a little bit concerned about the party atmosphere of that house right there, if it becomes a short-term rental. First, like I said, this is the first time I've heard about it. It was just probably about 4:30 this afternoon, so I thought I'd come up here and see about it. I got the property at 220 Eads, which is diagonally across the street, about 200 feet.
Sure.
I spent a lot of money fixing that house and, you know, bringing it to the standards that we, we need over here in East Ridge, and I'm really grateful for what's happening over here in East Ridge, you know, as everything's coming up and looking a lot better than what it was, you know? So I'd like to keep it there. While I was working on this house on Eads Street, we used to take bets how many police cars or fire trucks we'd see rolling up the hill to the Dogwood Apartments every day. I didn't want to have any more of that in this area, so that's, that's all I'm gonna leave the, the commission with, just see what you guys, you know, will see. But, yeah, there's obviously more people, and I've been contacted by more people out there in opposition to it. I think they're here too, back there. So if they would like to speak, you can take them, but...
And if you also wanted to chat with the property manager and give her contact information just in case it passes, that way if there is an issue, you can address it with her as well.
I mean, you know, there's not much I can do if it passes, you know, once again.
Right, well, sure, it still goes before two readings at city council.
Maybe they might come at you and decide the same thing, maybe make a party house across the street.
Sure, I will say, although I am neither in favor or against this, it is one bedroom, one bath, so it'd be a very small party. So this is, the proposed space is very small. But yes, I understand.
Why you make a duplex out there? Okay, thanks.
Uh-huh. Sure, if you'd like to approach, and once you reach the microphone, name and address, please.
My name is Billy Pickett. I live at 212 Eads. Also own the property at 6805 Martha Avenue, and my lot connects all the way to the back of it. So I own a lot of that.
Sure.
With my dad's house sitting at 220 that he owns now. I do not agree with this whatsoever. You have flying cars, you have children trying to walk with no sidewalk, meet cars head-on. I've been there, I'm 59, I just turned 59. I was born and raised there. I have, I just, I do not agree with this. You hear cars that are just so ungodly, they'll knock you out of your bed. I get up at 2:00 in the morning to go to work. You, if it's, if it's not those cars, it's boom, 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 till it pushes you out of bed. And then you have, like you said, fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, constantly something going on out there now that we used to never have. You can't leave your door unlocked. It's virtually impossible. And there's just too much traffic, too many children for anymore. Somebody's gonna get hurt. Somebody's gonna get hurt. To be the single home and, and rented if you wanted to, I understand that, but to make it something that's not, oh, different ballgame. That's gonna be constant movement.
Sure.
But I thank you for listening to me and taking into consideration not to do this.
Sure. Thank you very much. And just to clarify, the, the request is for it to be separated in two units with the upstairs, which is a three-bedroom, two-bath residence to be occupied by the primary applicant, and the part to be used as a rental unit is a one-bedroom, one-bath, which I believe is downstairs. And so that's, the request is not to turn this into a duplex as you're thinking, where there's two halves and two doors and all that. This is turn the basement unit into, into a separate rental, but...
I have a question. Is, is all that's in the basement a bedroom and a bath? There's no kitchenette or anything like that?
There is a kitchenette. I have a picture. There is a kitchenette, because if it's a long-term rental, it is, you have mine. I have pictures. It's, there would be one occupied, a traveling nurse, one person, or a family that's at Camp Jordan. Those are my, my target audience, and this is like a picture of the kitchenette.
If you want to start on that end, we'll just pass it down.
A whole side of that, whole side of that house and a kitchenette bed sofa. And I'm sure you guys are aware, you, you were calling short-term rentals R2, which is defined as duplex, as opposed to creating a category for...
Right.
Short-term rental.
We cannot decide if something's a short-term rental, that's not up to this body. We can just determine if it's a conforming zoning.
I installed, the last pictures of the door that I installed that separates the upstairs from the downstairs.
Sure.
Already has a fire, a smoke.
Well, she's looking at him, I'm gonna ask the...
Sir.
...file question. So even with this, it's still gonna have to have that fire, fire barrier?
Two separate occupancies.
Okay. So I just want to help you to understand that even if this gets rezoned, it's not gonna be able to be occupied as a duplex on the downstairs until the fire rating, that fire barrier is put in, which he said was gonna be very expensive, so you need to consider that. I'm not sure what that would cost, but I don't think that's gonna be cheap.
Yeah, the restrictions in East Ridge on short stays are pretty aggressive, I think you would say. They, they do require not just the zoning requirement, but there is a requirement that it be treated essentially as a duplex, and the, the fire restrictions and things are what we're trying to make sure you understood, and that's not, again, that's not up to us. We didn't create that. We are not in charge of the, the short-stay rentals. We're only talking about zoning conformity, and R2 allows short stays as one of those things, but since that's something you brought up, we just want to make sure that you understood that. I think we have one more person who...
And that's the safety, safety for everyone in both, both dwellings. If a fire starts downstairs, the last thing you want to do is go straight upstairs to the other resident.
I believe we have one more resident who's wanting to speak. If you'd approach, please. If you don't mind waiting till you get the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Steve Pickett, and I own the house at 212 Eads and 6805 Martha. And man, like my wife was telling y'all, there's people that, I don't know how many times East Ridge law has set up fire and caught them, just about all four wheels will leave the ground coming out of them apartments up there. And if you add more up there, all you're doing is adding more fuel to the fire. And there was one kid got killed. He come up over that hill and didn't make that turn, he went right off in that patch of woods where that signs that up there that you've got, and he hung from that tree up there and it killed him.
Sure, and I'm sure in...
Just a, a bad thing. There's no, there's nothing to do there for the kids, and they come in bouncing basketballs and stuff all the time, going down there to the park to play and stuff, and it's, it's a dangerous road as it is. You add another two or three or four places to stay there, all you're doing is adding fuel to a fire, and it's gonna get bad.
Sure. And just to clarify, R2 does not allow for apartments. This would be to allow one additional unit in that house. So we're talking about adding one unit. So just FYI, there is no plan or request to add apartments, as that's not possible within an R2, so...
So then there's just gonna be the one person that lives there.
A one-bedroom, one-bath, so, yeah, not very many people.
Thank you.
Now, the zoning would allow there to be a duplex, but considering this is a new construction home that's already existing, I don't think the plan is to remove that and put in a duplex, so...
Yeah, I mean, right, if, if this body approves that R2, and something ever did happen to that house, burned for whatever reason and exceeded 50%, now you have the opportunity to put a duplex, just keep that in mind.
Right.
So it's, you're allowed a single-family in an R2 and multifamily duplex.
Right, they can have two housing units on that property at infinitum, but they could not have apartments on that property.
Correct, yes.
Right. Any other questions? Now, I will entertain a motion to approve, amend, or deny the request to pass this along to the city council for a vote. Don't all speak at once.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, I have a motion to deny, and do we have a second? Or any other motion?
I'll second the motion. I'm just concerned with the safety.
Okay. We have a motion to deny that is from Commission Member Witt and seconded by Commission Member Williams, and can we have a roll call on that motion, please? And a vote of yes would mean that we are denying to clarify.
Vice Chairperson Howe?
No.
Commission Member Cornelius?
No.
Commission Member Williams?
Yes.
Commission Member Witt?
Yes.
Chairperson Tuggle?
No.
So we don't have a motion to deny. That also means that we do not have a request to approve, so we do not have anything to carry to city council at this point. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a motion from Commission Member Cornelius and a second from Commission Member Howe to approve. Can we get a roll call, please?
Vice Chairperson Howe?
Yes.
Commission Member Cornelius?
Yes.
Commission Member Williams?
No.
Commission Member Witt?
No.
Chairperson Tuggle?
Yes.
Okay, so this will move to the city council for two readings, and then it will be their determination whether or not this continues. And if you would like to speak to codes enforcement a little bit more before that, you will want to be amply prepared before the city council meeting, okay? And there being no further new business, this meeting is adjourned.